Okay, good morning, everyone. Today's the public hearing for Tuesday, January 28th. The time is 9:30. Erica, if you can call the roll.
Commissioner Malika.
President.
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. Thank you, Erica. Everyone can please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just need a motion to approve today's agenda. Do you want to say this one?
Oh, so moved.
Second. Motion passes five zero. So, good morning. This morning we have awards and presentations. Make sure I'm in the right part of the agenda. We're going to honor today, proclaim the International Holocaust Day of Remembrance, also Lunar New Year. So, it is said that those who do not remember history are doomed to repeat it. This phrase warrants restating often and with consideration of just how crucial it truly is. Every January, we take time to observe the International Holocaust Day of Remembrance and to memorialize the lives that were stolen by the oppression and massacre of the Nazi regime. From 1933 to 1945, six million Jewish people, as well as millions of other people from marginalized and persecuted groups, including people with disabilities, Romanian, Romanian people, members of the LGBTQ plus community, political opponents, and prisoners of war, Jehovah's Witness, and more, were systemically targeted, tyrannized, and murdered. International Holocaust Day of Remembrance is also about collectively participating in the vital, radical, and at times uncomfortable act of critically engaging with our global history. The scars of genocide, hate, and antisemitism are not only words in a history book, but active traumas that many members of our community continue to feel and fear to this day, including generational trauma. A better future for all of humanity depends on each of us actively choosing not to turn away from the discomfort of terrible events of the past. Instead, it's our duty to turn into the responsibility of remembering that history and taking every step we can make to make sure it never repeats again. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Julie Malika to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation, International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Whereas each year, the international community observes January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day by honoring the six million Jewish victims of the Holocaust and millions of other victims of Nazism. And whereas the Greater Denver Jewish Community Study, last conducted in 2019, focusing on Adams, Arapahoe, Boulder, Brumfield, Denver, Douglas, and Jefferson Counties, documented approximately 134,900 people in Jewish households. And whereas it was officially proclaimed by the United Nations General Assembly in November 2005 in commemoration of the victims of the Holocaust. And whereas January 27th, 1945 marks the anniversary of the liberation of the Nazi concentration and extermination camp of Auschwitz by Soviet troops. And whereas Audrey Azule, general director of the United Nations Education, Scientific, and Cultural Organization states, "The International Day of Commemoration in memory of the victims of the Holocaust is a time to mourn those who disappeared and to reflect upon the choice of the individuals and governments that allowed this genocide to unfold." It is also a call for vigilance and for action to address the root causes of hatred and prevent future atrocities from happening. And whereas the Holocaust has had universal implications and consequences throughout the world, it is the collective and shared responsibility of all for addressing the ongoing trauma, remembering the lives lost and impacted, and maintaining historic sites and promoting education, documentation, and research. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Adams County proclaim January 27th, 2025, as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, super staff, for putting that together, the remembrance and the recognition that that proclamation. So, the next item on our agenda.
Chair Baca, if I could make a comment?
Absolutely.
We normally pause for comments. I just wanted to take this moment for a couple of reasons. At this time last year, when we were reading this proclamation, it was the first time we discussed, and I certainly mentioned as chair, the hope of a ceasefire in Israel. And we finally have that 12 months later, thanks to the work of President Biden and the team as they were heading out of office. I also want to pause and reflect because I am here because my grandmother survived the concentration camps. She was the only member of her family to survive. And as a teenager, she was moved from camp to camp and finally walked home from her camp after being liberated, like Auschwitz, by the Russian troops as well, and walked home, only to find chaos in her home country of Hungary that continues to this day. In reflecting on the Holocaust as a child of Survivor and as an American, I often think about authors and speakers who have spoken about this and have survived themselves. One of the more interesting remembrances that I found was by Eli Rizel in his comments on the Salem Witch Trials Memorial. So, I don't know if any of you have ever had the privilege to visit Salem and see the memorial there for the women who were burned and hanged and the men who were hanged as well and crushed in various forms of torture. In reading from his comments, I think it's relevant for today and what we are thinking about in the current global situation. Eli spoke that day at the commemoration of the memorial in Salem. "We know that in philosophy, there are two absolutes, to bring life and to take it. Both are so easy. Anyone can bring life, but anyone can eliminate it. It's so easy to say to human beings, if only the person who was watching the injustice done to that human had said something, the humanity, the courage, the nobility to say, 'I cannot let it happen. I just cannot.'" There was a woman in Germany, in Berlin, a simple housewife, a woman saying, I'm not saying that housewives are simple, but she was a simple housewife and she saved some Jews during the war, during the war in Berlin. Therefore, they gave her a medal. There were so many journalists there at the medal ceremony, and they all asked her, "Why did you do it? Why did you get the courage? What have you done?" And she said, "Why? Why? I don't understand these questions." In the end, she straightened herself up and she said, "I want you to know why I did it. I will tell you. Because of self-respect." It is a matter of self-respect to help someone who needs our help means self-respect. To fight racism means self-respect. To fight intolerance done to another means self-respect. And therefore, when I read the stories of Salem, I find the victims had a lot of self-respect. And I think that there's a lot of lessons from our history for current times. And I'm glad that every year in Adams County, we take a moment to pause and have this remembrance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? All right. Our next proclamation is Adams County is for Lunar New Year, "has a unique and important distinction of being a majority-minority county. As such, we have a responsibility as local government to ensure that we take every opportunity to recognize, honor, and celebrate the diversity of the people and communities here in our county. Today, the Board of County Commissioners has the privilege shining the light on an important tradition and holiday that is observed by many in our county and throughout the world. Lunar New Year, which begins tomorrow, January 29th, as the first ever..." I'm going to pause just a second. "...as the first ever Latina Asian Pacific Islander to serve on this board. It's an honor and a privilege to get to introduce this proclamation today. Before we fully dive in, I want to give a special shout out to our Employee Led Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Council, A Proud, and to the Employee Asian American and Pacific Islander Affinity Group. A Proud and the AAPI affinity group created and championed this proclamation, which contains so much information about this vibrant holiday that so many people from across the world and here in Adams County celebrate in their own distinctive ways." So, with that, I want to introduce Commissioner Kathy Hudson to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am proud to read a proclamation regarding the Lunar New Year 2025. Whereas each year, the international community observes the Lunar New Year. This year, starting on January 29th, with celebrations taking place around the world for many East and Southeast Asian cultures who celebrate it, including Chinese, Korean, Vietnamese, and others. And whereas the population of Adams County is approximately 3.96% Asian. And whereas each year is represented by the yang or yin form of one of the five elements and one of the 12 animals from the Chinese zodiac. And whereas this year is designated as the Year of the Snake. As we transition from the Year of the Dragon, we embrace the wisdom and transformative energy of the snake. The Year of the Snake is associated with qualities such as wisdom, knowledge, intelligence, and creativity. And whereas different cultures have their own distinctive way of observing the Lunar New Year with special foods and customs that symbolize prosperity, unity, and abundance. Many families hold ceremonies to honor their ancestors, offering food and burning paper representations of material goods. Homes are often decorated with red paper and banners featuring calligraphy that conveys wishes for health, wealth, and happiness. Elders commonly give red envelopes filled with money to children as a gesture of goodwill. Foods made from rice are commonly enjoyed during the festivities, symbolizing family unity, while other dishes represent prosperity, wealth, and good fortune. And whereas Adams County Employee Led A Proud Affinity Group, Asian American and Pacific Islanders connects Asian, Asian American, and Pacific Islanders, who are employees and entrepreneurs, to celebrate the diverse cultures and professional backgrounds within our communities. And whereas neighboring countries in Asia have created their own celebrations influenced by the Lunar New Year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims January 29th, 2025, as the start of the 2025 Lunar New Year and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of the Asian community and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, normally, we don't take Commissioner remarks at proclamations. Thank you, Commissioner Pinter, for your remarks. I just want to thank the staff. Apparent that I didn't read the given notes ahead of me. I really want to thank you for the recognition of being the first Latina Asian Pacific Islander. What I love about our board and here in Adams County is really the welcoming of culture and relationship and friendship and really creating a space where everyone is seen and celebrated. And so, my grandfather came from the Philippine Islands. He immigrated here with a fourth grade education. Him and his brother worked the sugar beet fields in Hawaii before they settled here in Colorado and became agricultural vegetable farmers out of necessity for the family business. They also were a large vegetable farmer here in the 1980s and early 90s, providing food and nourishment for families across the region here in Adams County in the Front Range. He has a lot of wisdom. He's deceased now, but he had a lot of wisdom for having a fourth grade education and coming here. And he's my hope. That when times get bad and hard, to come here without... Knowing what you're getting into as a young teenager, not knowing the language, not knowing where you live, not knowing where you work, living under a palm tree in Hawaii, to come here and raise a family of nine. My homestead, the homestead, which we call the farm, is just about eight miles southwest of here in Adams County. We are one of those farming families that the generations did not take that... We did not take that on as second-generation Adams County residents. So, my cousins and I, it was really ingrained in us to go out and get an education, which many of us did, but none of us went back to the family farm to work. We always went back to the family farm to celebrate, celebrate life, celebrate family. It is my heart and soul to still drive to the homestead to visit my... All of my uncles live there and their families side by side. There's four of them. And, you know, it's really to honor... Today's to honor for me, my grandfather. This is not a tradition of the red envelopes, but my niece did bring that back for our family. And tonight, we will celebrate Lunar New Year for the first time as a family. She lived in San Diego getting her degree. I have my red envelopes. I've made my dish. I'm ready to celebrate. But, you know, this is really a country of hope. It's really a country of opportunity. And I hope that we don't lose that going forward. And I thank every day for my grandfather that when days get hard, he had it much harder. And so, today, and thank you, board, and thank you to the audience for letting me share that story with you. So, next on our agenda is public comment. And Erica, do you have anything, any citizens that have signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Anyone that has signed up for land use, you'll be recognized later during the land use hearings. So, the next item on our agenda is elected official communication. Anything from my board? I don't see any elects in the audience. Just raise your hand. Then we'll find the speaker button. Thanks, Kathy. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you. Express my gratitude to staff for putting together the proclamations for today and to be part of a board that recognizes these important days in our community. So, the proclamation, and Commissioner Pinder said it so eloquently, and the comments from staff prepared for the chair about knowing your history, doing what you can not to repeat the horrible chapters of our history. And the inspiring words by the chair about Adams County and our country being a land of hope and opportunity. And I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to serve on this board to further those ideals. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I just need a motion for the consent calendar.
Motion to accept the consent calendar.
The motion passes five to zero. Next item on our agenda is new business. I don't see any new business, but county manager?
That's correct, Madam Chair. No new business.
Thank you so much. County attorney?
No business.
It's really shocking. Thank you, Heidi.
And, you know, because this is unusual, maybe we should state for the record that we did have an executive session prior to public hearing, so we're not voting to go into that today. But it was on the study session agenda that there was an executive session this morning.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Staff need a few minutes for land use? Yes. Okay, let's take a five-minute break and we're going to head down to the front for pictures with the proclamations. And anyone from the affinity groups, if you're here, if you'd come down also. And anyone from the affinity groups, if you're here, if you'd come down also. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this, uh, into session. Before we get to the land use case, um, we do want to go back. Oh, what item is it? We have, uh, under new business county manager, um, we're gonna allow you to speak. Where's Dave? And then we're gonna get right into the land use. So interim county manager Frazier, looks like Katie McDougal's coming down as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I'm the, uh, I'm gonna be the mouthpiece, uh, for the next few minutes because, uh, I'm not sure Katie can. But I am gonna read some of her words that I asked her to write for me. You okay with that Katie? Uh, we lost, uh, it's unfortunate when this happens and it happens too often, but we lost a, uh, valued employee over in our human services, uh, department, uh, Cynthia True Love. And, um, I didn't know, really know Cynthia, but, uh, I think when you have a name like True Love, you have, there must be some pressure to live up to that, uh, to that name. Uh, but I just wanna read, I'm gonna have a hard time. I just wanna read, um, some things that, uh, I asked Katie to write a few words and I'm just gonna read them if that works. Cynthia was with the department for nine years. She worked at, as our ambassador, at our ambassador desk and helped the community navigate Medicaid and SNAP services. She was an integral part of our team, known for her smile, dedication, kindness, and knowing everything there was to know about our services. She was the first face and, she was the first face the community saw as they entered our building. She welcomed members of our community, experiencing a really hard time in a gentle, kind and supportive way. And again, these are Katie's words. The community remembered how she made them feel and would ask for her if greeted by another worker. As I worked the front desk to cover for the team last week, I experienced this myself. Mister Z, Mister Z, an unhoused community member, always received his mail from Cynthia and he missed not getting to say hello to her. She supported her team and was a mentor to many of them as they learned this tough job. To them, she was more than a colleague, she was a friend. She also gave of her time at community events. And again, um, just, just, um, uh, we were honored to have her be the face of Adams County for so many of our people who were, uh, in vulnerable situations and, uh, the, I know the department over there is taking loss very hard and I apologize for making you stand here next to me Katie.
No, thank you for recognizing her.
Um, but I just wanted to, to read that and to recognize Cynthia, uh, for all the good that she did and, and, uh, as a representative of the many others over there that, that do this good work. Do you wanna say anything or you?
Thank you. Cynthia was very important to us, so I appreciate you taking time to recognize her.
Thank you.
Thank you Katie. Thank you Dave. Please extend our deepest sympathy and condolences to members of your team. Um, very critical service that she provided for Adams County, for our community. Okay, with that, we're gonna start, uh, the land use. So staff?
Great. Good morning commissioners. I am Jen Rutter. I'm the planning and development manager. Uh, I am presenting on behalf of Greg Barnes, who is out on paternity leave. The case before you is Arvada Tennyson North Trunk Sewer Improvements Project, Case RCU 2024 dash 12. It's located along Tennyson Street between I-76 and West 61st Place. So the request before you is an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and Adams County to facilitate a proposed sewer improvements project by the city. According to the Adams County Development Standards and Regulations, the proposed wastewater pipeline improvements are considered in an, and acter- areas and activities of state interest, also known as an AASI, or you may know it as a 1041 permit. The regulations allow for the county to enter into an IGA with the municipality in lieu of an AASI permit. The IGA process is beneficial to both parties because it allows for the negotiation of the terms of the agreement and collaboration. This case was originally heard on November 19th, 2024 and, uh, was continued to allow time for the city to perform additional stakeholder outreach to the Square Lake property owners and for additional floodplain analysis to be completed. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. So here's an aerial image of the area, uh, the Tennyson Street, um, right of way is highlighted in red. Um, you can see the project goes from West 61st Avenue or Place, um, all the way down to I-76. The zoning map shows the city of Arvada, uh, the incorporated area is located in that gray over to the western side of Tennyson Street. You can see some residential one C zoning, um, public land zoning, which is the Highland Hills Park, uh, that's in the blue. And then there's a industrial two-zoned area that's in the Square Lake Sub area plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. So this is the future land use map. As you can see, there's some, uh, residential medium, a mixed use all the way over towards Federal Boulevard to the east. There's a large portion of parks and open space. Again, that's the Highland Hills, uh, Park District and the Jim Baker Reservoir. And then to the west of Tennyson Street is the Square Lake Sub area plan area. This plan was adopted in January of 2022. It was a joint planning effort between the city of Arvada and Adams County. Um, uh, you can see that the area to the north includes the Gold Strike Station area and goes south down to the Berkeley Village Mapple Home Park. The central area, which is in that kind of dark blue and purple, it was identified to have development potential if the environmental constraints could be mitigated, including that of the Clear Creek Flood Plain. It has a future land use designation of mixed use employment or employment mixed use that envisions employment uses, including offices, indoor manufacturing, warehouse and technology uses. This is a closer, closer depiction of that area and the floodplain and floodway. The floodplain is that lighter blue. Um, and then the floodway is, uh, in that darker blue, which does encumber quite a, quite a number of those properties as well as the, the park over to the east. And Adams County has been working with the property owners in that area on a plan to remove those properties from the floodway and floodplain. So, um, here's a description, description, depiction of the project. The city of Arvada recently completed a sanitary sewer master plan. Multiple areas were identified as being at the end of their design life and are needing an increase in capacity, particularly those areas in western Arvada and Jefferson County. The North Trunk Sewer Sanitary Collection System is part of the subject request. It connects to the Metro Water Recovery Station. The proposed project would include the replacement of the sanitary sewer pipe. It's a gravity fed line. The existing line ranges between 21 and 30 inches in diameter and the new line would be 42 inches in diameter. The project would also include earthwork, trenching, backfilling, pipe testing and relocation of service lines. So there are 36 criteria we consider, um, in the approval of this application. Uh, they include technologically and financially feasible conformity with the comprehensive plan, uh, does not degrade the environment, an alternatives analysis that illustrates the best option, and I'll talk about those, uh, alternatives here in a moment, that is compatible, harmonious, harmonious and not detrimental, and is located to avoid conflicts with adopted plans. All of the criteria are listed in your packet and at the end of this presentation. So, uh, the city of Arvada provided five different alternatives. The first was to delay the construction of the project. This was not an option. The sewer main has already exceeded capacity and has surpassed its useful life. Alternative two was to align the sewer main outside of the Tennyson Street right of way. This option would encumber private property and result in several properties not being served, including several located unincorporated Adams County. Uh, alternative three was to add a lift station. This, uh, option was potentially viable, but very complex and costly. And difficult to design and construct. Additionally, the city has an ordinance that prevents the use of lift stations within the city limits. Although this is an unincorporated. The, uh, alternative number four would be to construct a proposed 42 inch pipe and allow for a reduced cover over the pipe. This is the city's preferred route and the most viable option to allow for flood, floodplain mitigation. This is the one that is reflected, uh, in the intergovernmental agreement before you today. Alternative number five would be to construct a new sanitary sewer pipe parallel to the existing pipe. Although this would be a viable option, this would not allow for the floodplain improvements. So notifications were sent to 217 property owners and occupants within 750 feet of the right of way of this project. We received only one letter and it was from a real estate company in support of the request. Several referral agencies provided comments, including CDPHE and Excel Energy that offered best practices during construction. So during the November 19th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners hearing, um, the commissioners had questions about the developability of the Square Lake Sub area, property owner outreach that had been performed, and whether the floodplain could be mitigated if option number four were to be chosen. We did have one public comment. It was provided by Mike Fiori, who was a property owner in the Square Lake Sub area. During the public hearing, he commented on the work that he was doing on the floodplain analysis. The Board of County Commissioners continued this case to today, January 28th, 2025, to allow for additional floodplain modeling to be completed and to confirm if floodplain could be mitigated if option number four were to be chosen, as well as to conduct additional stakeholder outreach. So over the past two months, the city has conducted additional outreach in, for those Square Lake Sub area owners, property owners, and provided pipeline designs for the floodplain analysis. Uh, Mike Fiori did hire an engineering firm, HKS, and it would deter, they determined that the floodplain could be mitigated with option four if Tennyson Street were to be modified. Um, the memo, uh, is in exhibit 7.01 of your packet. Adams County Public Works Department also reviewed this memo and concurred with the conclusions, and that is also in exhibit 7.02 of your packet. So therefore staff, uh, believes that the request conforms to the criteria of approval for an intergovernmental agreement in lieu of an AASI permit. We are recommending approval, uh, of the IGA RCU 2024 dash 12 with 36 findings of fact and two conditions. These are the 36 findings of fact. I will not read them all. And the two recommended conditions are that they comply with the terms of the approved of intergovernmental agreement and that the city of Arvada shall continue to work diligently in a cooperative manner with the county and property owners on Tennyson Street project site alignment and shall comply with the conditions of approval listed in section 6E of the IGA, which shall include allowing a variance to an engineering code of standards and specif- specif- uh, specif- specifications as may be amended from time to time specifically pertaining to depth of cover standards around the section of sanitary sewer pipe located in Tennyson Street between West 58th Avenue and Interstate 76 to facilitate floodplain mitigation related to adjacent area properties. And I will conclude my staff presentation. I am available for questions.
Fantastic. Thank you Jen. So our order of business this morning is it comes to the board for questions. Um, we'll go back out to the applicant to make a presentation and or comments, back to the board for questions. We'll have public comment, then discussion by the board. So at this time, any questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Drizio?
I, I appreciate that presentation and it sounds like you've done a lot of work, both with the, uh, folks in our community that are trying to, to, to invest in that area. I mean, we spent a lot of time on that Square Lakes plan and in that neighborhood, trying to make it uh, better in many, many ways. So I, I just wanna thank staff. I wanna thank the community. I wanna thank Arvada for what it sounds like, uh, you guys are working. I know we're gonna hear from everyone, but, um, I'm not hearing what I was worried about last time, which is that this, uh, project could potentially negatively impact the development and the implementation and success of that Square Lakes plan. Uh, that's, can you confirm that?
Uh, that's, that's what the, um, analysis has determined is that it, it would be feasible to mitigate the floodplain and allow for those properties to be developed.
Thank you. No questions at this time. I may have some more later.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Not seeing any additional questions from the board. Uh, would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Well, good morning commissioners and thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. My name is Jaclyn Rhodes and I'm the Director of Public Works for the city of Arvada. I'm joined here at the podium by Mary Stahl, who is our Utilities Engineering Manager. And we have other members of the Arvada team here today, um, representing, uh, our attorney's office and our interim director of utilities, our deputy city manager, our community and economic development director, as well as a council member here in the audience. We have our engineering consulting team and our, uh, construction contractor also available. So if there are any questions that come up during the discussion today, we're happy to bring others up to the podium to make sure we answer all of your questions and concerns. So I wanna begin by thanking the county team, um, for the extensive work that you've done with us to get us to the project that's before you today. I think we've arrived at a solution that benefits all of us and I'm very grateful for the time that you worked with us, especially between the last hearing. So we didn't bring our visual aids with us for this hearing to depict the size of the existing 30 inch pipeline and what, um, upsizing this line to a 42 inch line would look like. Um, we do still have, uh, illustration in the presentation slides that indicates really that the, the crown of the pipe or the top of the pipe for the 30 inch to the 42 inch line, uh, remains the same. And you're gonna hear a little bit more from Mary later in the presentation about why we need to upgrade this line. So we're gonna follow, I'm gonna go back. We're gonna follow a similar agenda to what we covered last hearing. Uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about the collaborative work that was conducted on the project. Um, to date, all of the alternatives that were considered and of course, the proposed project details. Um, but I wanted to emphasize here, and what I hope that we're able to convey to you is that we heard your comments the last hearing. We've been working on them. Um, we've taken them seriously, seriously and taken action to address your concerns. Um, also our genuine appreciation for the collaborative work that's been done with the county team, the stakeholders, and again, the commitment to continue to work together throughout this project as we've been able to address some of the specific concerns with this project since that we heard at the last hearing. So we started to work together really, um, since early 2023 on this project to figure out what it would take to get this 30 inch line, um, replaced in the existing Tennyson right of way to the 42 inch line. And since that time, we've been working together on this solution. The purpose and primary driver for this project is really, it's an aging infrastructure project. Um, this line is 60 years old, needs to be replaced and it's being upsized to accommodate development in the region. So again, Mary's gonna be sharing some more details about the background of the project itself and some of the, um, benefits of the project or risks if the project is delayed. Um, I wanted to emphasize that the item before you does accommodate, as you've heard in the staff presentation, um, the floodway work that's contemplated to help develop the sub area, um, plan for Square Lakes. So before you today is a solution that addresses both the county and city goals and it builds on the other collaborative work that's happening between our teams. Referenced a few examples here, including the Tennyson Street bike lane and sidewalk improvements. We've already talked about the Square Lake Sub area plan. And of course, this really dates back to overall drainage way, um, improvements work that was contemplated back in 2008. So as I pass it over to Mary and before we discuss the project background, I wanna share upfront, um, what has occurred since you requested that we do this additional work with the stakeholders. And again, we wanted to analyze the impact of this pipe replacement project, um, with the future floodway work.
All right. Thank you Jaclyn. And I am Mary Stahl, the Utilities Engineering Manager, and I'm happy to discuss this project again today. We're presenting much of what we presented last time in recognition of having new commissioners, um, to bring everyone up to speed. So, uh, we met on November 25th with all the project stakeholders and that included various, uh, governmental groups, including Metro Water, uh, Mile High, uh, at, um, Adams County, um, Arvada, as well as, uh, property owners and HKS their engineer. And in that meeting, we talked through what everyone's needs, standards and desires were for this area. Um, and really the point of that meeting was to give HKS, uh, the direction, um, that they needed to do the analysis. In other words, what were their guardrails to meet all the different stakeholders' needs? Um, those discussions continued through December with HKS and, um, the city is super appreciative of the work HKS did. Um, as an engineer, I'm fully aware of how much work you did and how fast you did it. Um, they, they really- They really, it was a Herculean task, and they came through with the memo on January third. And then I also do want to reference and appreciate county staff reviewing the memo that quickly as well, as you'll see, January third to January ninth, less than a week. And I do want to address two comments in particular from that memo that were addressed to Arvada moving forward. And that'll be my next slide. But this first one is just pointing out that we agree, I think Metro agrees, Mile High agrees, Adams County staff agree, that we have a path forward. We have a conceptual plan that will take us forward, and that's what this quote is. I don't need to read it. So I did mention that there were two comments, and if you'll forgive me, I love technical details. I can talk sewer all day. I will talk sewer all day with you. But I am going to get super technical here because I just want to assure commissioners that Arvada has started this process with the understanding that this was a very congested area, very difficult area to build in, that there were numerous stakeholders, and from the beginning, our pipe design was above and beyond what is normal for this kind of design. And I think that shows in that one of the comments was around, can we minimize separation between utilities? And the answer is yes, because the pipe design from the beginning was designed to take highway loadings, so can take a ton, ton of stuff going across it. The type of pipe is actually stiffer and provides less deflection than the normal type of pipe used for sewer, which is PVC. And where that's critical is in pipe design, it's not just the pipe, it's also the soil. They work as a unit. And if we reduce that cover, then we don't have as much soil. So by starting with a pipe that was stiffer and had less flexibility, we are allowing for less soil to begin with. And then we took it a step further. Within the normal design stiffness for this pipe type and this size, we took it higher, just again, to provide another level of a safety, a safety factor. And then I also want to address that there are multiple ways to make this crossing happen, and that was reflected in the Adams County memo, that it could be two circular culverts versus a box culvert versus. But it can be designed multiple, multiple ways. It could be designed as a bridge, be a little weird, but you could do it. It could be the different kinds of pipes. All that Arvada is asking is just give us calks that show us you're not imposing any more load than exists with initial installation. So in other words, we're not saying it has to be X, Y, Z. We're just saying, give us calks that show us you're not going to impact the pipe. And we think that's very doable since we went, we took the design of the pipe up and above beyond what is normal for this kind of pipe. And then the other comment was around infiltration and exfiltration, and I promise this is my last super technical slide. Infiltration, we don't want to be taking in water from the surrounding soil because, A, we don't need to pay Metro to treat water that's not wastewater. But also, water moving through soil is never a good thing, just like on your home foundation or a building foundation, not good under a roadway or around your pipe. Same thing on exfiltration. We don't want sewage going out into the environment, and water movement where you don't anticipate it can cause bad things to happen. Because of the congested environment and because of all the things surrounding this particular location, the designer actually recommended that we specify it as a pressure pipe that can take up to fifty P S I. Sewer pipes normally are specified at three to five P S I. And just to give you a reference, what comes into your home is about sixty or seventy. So we've actually taken it well above and beyond, and we did this for two reasons. One, to make sure the pipe stays watertight. But the second one, meaning we don't have to do something secondary to make sure there's no water movement. So in other words, we can maintain that vertical space because we don't need to do a secondary means of making sure we don't have water movement. I promise that was the end of your pipe one-on-one lecture, pipe design. So project background and purpose. As Jaclyn mentioned, this is really a replacement project. Pipe was installed in nineteen sixty-two, so that's sixty-three years old, and it is at end of life. It is also full, and that is critical because the pipe is at risk of spill. The pipe is also at risk of rupture. It does go under pressure conditions, under certain conditions, and this pipe type was never designed for any kind of pressure. So that makes us a little nervous. And would also like to point out that everything goes according to plan. We are nowhere near digging up this road again for sixty to sixty-plus years. The pipe manufacturer actually tells us eighty to a hundred. We don't quite believe them, but sixty-plus easy. So again, coming back to, okay, so there'll be a little bit more technical pipe design. When you connect to an interceptor, an interceptor just means big sewer pipe versus a little sewer pipe. Metro actually prefers that you come in at the crown of their pipe, so that you don't have any impacts from their pipe into your pipe. Because of the tight conditions here, we are actually maintaining crown and coming in under the crown of their pipe to maintain that vertical space within the alignment. So from the beginning, we have actually relaxed some standards. And so we've maintained crown through this area to provide as much space as possible for anything that comes into the future. And that is what you see in this picture here that Jaclyn mentioned, that we had our visual aids last time of the two gaskets. The smaller circle is thirty inches, the forty-two is what we are planning to put in. And the drawing above just indicates that the new pipe is shown at the same crown. The work will be done in the pavement. This is a gravity solution. Gravity is lovely. It never turns off. It doesn't require any workers. It doesn't require any mechanical things that break, and it doesn't require power, which means it's really not intrusive or obtrusive to anyone that goes by. And I think the point of that is, does anyone know where their sewer pipes are? And the answer is no. No, they don't, and that's by design. They run by gravity, underground, and it minimizes odors and noise and visual and all of that, and that's what the solution provides us. So the benefits of the project, currently with the pipe at full condition, we do have a risk of spill, which is an environmental risk. Don't want sewage out in the environment. That is harmful to water quality and to wildlife, but that's also public health and safety. We need to keep sewage in pipes, and that is the goal of, I think, every sewage agency in the country is let's keep sewage in pipes to protect public health and safety. That also means we can provide reliable service. That means that sewage can leave everyone's home and move on down to treatment. Other project benefits are that this will provide capacity for changes in Square Lake area. So this map, the gray area is roughly in-city customers, and I say roughly because it gets a little weird down at the bottom, and I'm not that good at drawing in PDFs. The orange blocks are unincorporated customers. But really where this is important is some of the plans in the sub area plan are for changes around the G line. And right now, we don't have capacity to serve those changes. So with the new pipe, we will have the capacity to serve those changes. A gravity pipe also allows for service from the west. That's an area we don't currently serve because it's outside city limits and our city code says you have to be within the city to serve it, unless you're, what's the word I want, grandfathered in from something way long ago. But that, we absolutely are open to people coming in and asking for annexation to get service. That's a fairly regular request of us. So our timeline. The master plan has been mentioned. That was in early twenty twenty-two. The information that we were at fairly high risk of spill in this area was relatively alarming. And so we hired a consulting engineer and we sold bonds in late twenty twenty-two to finance this project. So we have financing in place, and we have been working on this. As noted, we began collaborating with Adams County staff in early twenty twenty-three. We also hired a contractor then, which probably sounds a little weird. This is an alternative delivery project, and we brought the contractor in early because it is so complicated between the railroads and all the other utilities. It, having the contractor in as part of the design, they can provide cost estimates for different ideas. They can provide constructability input for different ideas, and it's really been a very good collaboration, and they have given us a lot of good ideas on how to move forward with the minimum impact we can. In late twenty twenty-three, county staff indicated we might need an A S I. That was confirmed at the end of first quarter. The city put their application in, I believe, in May of twenty twenty-four, and then we presented in November, and then here we are. We would like to start construction in the next four to eight weeks so that we can be done by the end of the year. It is a six to eight month expected construction timeframe. So it seems fast to me, but B T keeps telling me they can do it. And they have lots of record of doing it that fast in other places, so they're not just telling us. They were hired because they have a great reputation and a lot of project experience like this. Project alternatives, Jen did a very nice job providing some alternatives. These aren't in quite the same order. As she mentioned, deferring is not really feasible. We are at risk right now, and the pipe is at end of life. Doing nothing is not feasible for the same reasons. Good engineers always ask, can we just do nothing? And the answer is no, in this case. A new pipe not in Tennyson? We tried really hard. This is a hard, hard corridor. It's even harder if we go somewhere else. There's a reason the pipe is here. We tried, but just not feasible. So could we pump? The answer is yes, but it has a lot of impact, and it's not sustainable. It's electricity now and forever, as well as mechanical pieces that break and have to be maintained and replaced now and forever, as well as visual noise and odor impacts. To be blunt, pump stations stir up the sewage, and when you stir up sewage, gases release. And you can mitigate that, but it never makes it really go away. It's tough to do. And then could we put multiple pipes in Tennyson to keep the pipe smaller? And the answer is yes, but that's taking up horizontal alignment. So far, we've only been talking about vertical alignment. We'd be taking up more horizontal alignment in an already congested corridor. So parts of Tennyson have two water districts. There's ditch line, I think, but it's Westminster's. It's actually a ditch line, but Westminster is the primary owner of the ditch. A ditch line, there's power, there's gas, there's all your dry utilities, and it's not a very big road, so it's already a very congested horizontal corridor. So while feasible, it has far more impact than doing one bigger pipe, because we'd have to move far more of the existing utilities to make that work. So this comes from our application of are we meeting chapter six criteria, which is the chapter on A S I? And the proposed project does meet all of the criteria, slightly different number than what Jen provided, and you can see where I came up with the number of criteria, the different sections. The lift station just flat out does not meet some of the criteria because it has impacts visually with odor, because it takes up horizontal space, because you need multiple pipes. And then the other twos of doing two smaller pipes or doing the project without us allowing a variance on vertical clearance. We could make it meet the criteria, but there's some challenges in making that happen. So the city is very, very comfortable that this is the best project for this location. Specifically, some things that the lift station won't meet within the A S I criteria is first of all, we're not, while technically feasible, we're not sure it's regulatoryly feasible. I don't know if I said that right. C D P H E and Highland Hills would have to provide approval, and there's no guarantee that they would provide approval. C D P H E's stance in general is that gravity is your best solution, and please give us good reasons why you can't use gravity. Criteria eight is around rates and financial impacts to users. There would be higher, it's more money to build a lift station than the pipe, and there would be financial impacts in perpetuity because of the additional maintenance and replacement and electricity. And so that includes all the residents of Adams County that are within city limits, as well as those customers that are outside city limits. A lift station would degrade the use of Clear Peak Valley Park. A lift station must be located outside the floodplain. And as we, Jen showed that map, there's this one little piece south of the railroad tracks, and you want to put your lift station with the shortest pumped line you can. So there would be a lot of impact there. That number eleven is not an efficient use of resources because it really requires significant power, and that is forever, whereas gravity is free. This loss of utility alignment is really the one that kind of gnaws at me. So you have the pipe into the lift station, and then you have to have two pipes out of the lift station. C D P H requires two force mains because you have to have full redundancy. So instead of having one pipe in the right-of-way, we now have three pipes in one part and two pipes all the way down to the connection. And then a lift station, as I mentioned, has a lot of impact. There's visual noise and odor impacts. And then the last one is having a pumped line along Tennyson all the way down to our connection will make it more difficult to serve that area directly to the west because it's much harder to tie into a pumped line than it is into a gravity line. So outreach, we had an impressive meeting in April. Nine hundred and ten notifications were mailed. The gray area is all the properties that got that mailed notification. And it was in English and Spanish. Arvada staff attended, and we provided a project description, project boundaries, gave them a website. We have a project website for all our projects, and we did not receive negative feedback. Everyone understood that, yep, sixty years old, yeah, you probably need to come do that. And they would appreciate that sewage stays in pipe, and everyone seemed to understand there will be a little bit of short-term pain with roadway because we're in the roadway to construct. That's kind of an is. That's one we can't get around, and that's true of all utility construction, whether that's dry utilities or wet utilities. In addition, we had the Zoom meeting in November that included the property owners, as well as the governmental stakeholders that I mentioned already. Square Lake Sub area plan, did want to go into a little bit of depth on this. It has been mentioned a couple of times already. I know that Adams County and Arvada are both committed to moving the Square Lake Sub area plan forward. There were three focus areas, the G line, the central, and the south. Where this is critical is the G line is where we probably are most likely to see redevelopment the soonest. And as I noted, right now, the city cannot allow for additional sewage flow from that area without additional capacity in the pipeline. The project is actually in the central area, and the central area has a number of challenges, the floodway floodplain, which has been noted. There's also historic landfill and flammable gas areas within that central area. That floodway floodplain challenge, the concept was noted. City staff has done a lot of work around that. We've had a lot of changeover from retirement. We've delved into that two thousand eight concept, and there were a lot of serious challenges with that concept, which I think were borne out by all the work that H K S has done, and that something a little bit different was needed than what was in that two thousand eight plan. So again, city staff super appreciate all the work H K S did because it wasn't just saying, oh, we've got a concept and it works. We have a concept and it doesn't work. So the sub area plan had a number of guiding principles, and this slide just provides that we either have no impact on that principle or we have positive impacts on the principles as listed in the sub area plan with this project. And then once again, just wanted to highlight that we did hear you, and we continued that stakeholder outreach, and the stakeholders think that H K S has come up with a very feasible concept. And Jaclyn, you have a few more?
I'll just wrap it up here. I hope that we've been able to demonstrate to you that our project meets your submittal and your your submittal criteria and your decision criteria, and benefits both the city and Adams County. Through this presentation, the additional work that we've gone and performed since the last hearing and the I G A before you, I think we've been able to address some of the concerns that were shared about this project. Specifically, the I G A is allowing the future storm infrastructure to be built lower with a lower clearance than typical for our design. And I think you've heard that the analysis that was performed that county staff shared and Mary spoke to, and H K S is here to also be able to speak to, that the concept is feasible to convey the flows needed for the mitigation work. So I just wanted to close with sincere gratitude for the work of the county team, our stakeholders and the city team, to be able to come forward to you today with a solution that we think is very workable. And thank you again for your time and consideration. I respectfully ask that you approve this item before you today.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Comes back to the board for questions.
Um, comes back to the board for questions. Okay, not seeing any questions from the board. Um, now it's time for public comments, so you can go ahead and take a seat. Anyone in the pub, from the public wanted to comment on this particular land use? Yes, please come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, I didn't sign in, but uh, I'm Mike Fiori with Fiori Equities. I own uh, some of the property due west of this. And I, I was the one who presented the, kind of the hurdle a couple of months ago, back in November. And I do appreciate Arvada for uh, cooperating with our engineer. Appreciate my engineer for busting his tail for a couple of weeks before the holidays, getting this all uh, analyzed. And I appreciate the county for letting me speak. I guess I, I've been more focused on the floodplain, but I do have a question if this new sewer line would serve unincorporated Adams County or if it's only Arvada?
Yes, go ahead. I, I, do we do back and forth of public comment or do we just receive it?
I, I, I think you could lay the question on the table and then we could ask the question officially. And so, um, Madam Chair?
Yes, Steve, Commissioner.
Can we ask uh, Arvada to clarify that one issue? If it means Mr. Fiori steps aside and then you can come back and we can get that one other question answered.
Absolutely.
So that's all I have, but uh, thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Can official, an official from Arvada respond to Commissioner Odoricio's question?
Good morning, my name is Jessica Morales. I am an attorney with the City of Arvada. So I'm just coming up to answer the question, I believe I heard about um, whether we can serve only in the city or if we can serve also unincorporated Adams County. So our city code does address that. We have a general, um, generally, we can only serve city of Arvada properties. Um, so generally, no property located outside of the city that is eligible to annex to the city can be served by either uh, water or sewer um, until the property is annexed into the city. There is a procedure for properties who are not eligible to annex um, to receive service and that does require city council approval.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So can I give a little bit?
Yes. Go ahead, Mary.
I was gonna say, in addition, this property is technically in a different, excuse me, in a different water and sand district. So that makes it a little more complicated as well without that annexation because they are located in the Berkeley Water and Sand District. So it's technically someone else's service area.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks for that clarification. Any other uh, public comments, even those that didn't maybe sign up today? We have quite a few people in the public hearing room. Okay, not seeing anybody, the, the item comes back to the board for discussion. Commissioner Odoricio, then, Hanson.
So um, what I'm hearing is um, based on what I'm hearing today. And I want to again, thank Arvada for working with our staff and our community members uh, to make sure that all the work and all the vision that we have for the Square Lakes Plan uh, could come to reality. Meaning to make what is somewhat a, an underdeveloped or um, an area that needs attention and investment that it can still proceed. And I appreciate that. Uh, I would recommend that the city staff, uh, the county staff work with Mr. Fiori so he understands uh, those lines between full annexation or exception, non-annexation, and then also the hopes that he might have to jump through for um, his own, uh, the, the sewage uh, di- and water district in that particular area. I think that makes sense. Uh, it, it's important, the work that you guys did because this area does need a lot of attention. And I do suspect we're going to have a lot more um, attention and, and pe- people pay more attention to this general area. It's so important. So thank you very much, that's all I have to say. And uh, if there's no other issues, I will support it, but I'm not making the motion yet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, just one quick question. So this, as was mentioned, well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough. Thank you for the, doing the additional stakeholdering that was stakeholding. Uh, I was not on the board when that was requested, but I think that it's beneficial and it was helpful for me today to have that be included in the, in the presentation. So thank you for that. Uh, so as an, as you mentioned, this is a sixty-year upgrade that's over, overdue and, or is, is very much due uh, and rather urgently. It is just an infrastructure upgrade that the floodplain all still exists the way it is. This just improves the sewer line so that future development such as can be done in a floodplain in this flood area can proceed. Is that correct? Okay, thank you, yes. And I would, I just would echo the comments by Commissioner Odoricio that I think this is um, a, a, a good proj- a good project for this area um, that is going to allow for, for a more positive future rather than just the status quo of where it is now because there is potential here in this area. So um, I will also be supporting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Mulca?
Yeah, I really just wanted to ask a, a question. Again, thank you for the context for today and, and catching us up in the conversation. Um, so with this sixty-year pipe, um, is there, it, as part of your analysis, did you guys look at growth in the potential area? We're not going to have any other issues coming up where we're going to need to do this again sometime in like ten years?
I will allow for you to answer that. Um, we're seeing questions from the board, so come, come on up. This is supposed to be board deliberation, but go ahead and.
The answer is yes. Um, so what was used for the analysis was build out uh, projections. And then we did a sensitivity analysis where we said, well, what if more happens? And so the answer is yes. So as, as we, and we also set our standards for depth of pipe um, conservatively, so that there's like some extra depths that could be used if we're wrong.
Okay.
Forty years from now.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Um, no, no other questions or?
Commissioner Pinter?
I don't know any questions. My colleagues have asked really good questions. We've seen this presentation before. We sent you back with questions to consider and collaborative conversations to be had. It seems like you all had them. You put the engineers through their paces. I always love to see an engineer um, showing up with all of their, their sharpest pencils and the team working collaboratively. I also um, appreciate the comment from the neighbor, um, uh, Fiori. I, I apologize, I always say Fiori and Sons, but I know that it's uh, the broader corporation. And you are um, you know, valued member of the Adams County family and you raised valid questions, even though you're in a different water and sanitation district. So I hope that Arvada will continue to have conversations with their neighbors, our neighbors at Fiori to be able to continue that collaborative conversation. Whether annexation is a good idea or existing in their current water and sanitation district is always a cost benefit analysis for each property owner. So I don't have any questions. I know that was a little bit of just verbal feedback and complimenting the teams who were quite um, detailed in their work. And thank you for bringing this back and for the detailed presentation from my own recollection, as well as for our new board members.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to close this out. Um, this morning is, I want to thank the City of Arvada for listening to Adams County. Um, Mr. Fiori, who was also here at the last uh, meeting in November. Um, I, I really want to commend, um, you know, as government to be plod along and think we have no impact on others. And I think this is a, a direct uh, feedback taken by Arvada that there is collaboration and partnership. Um, and that doesn't cost us anything. And so I want to thank Mr. Fiori and HKS that, on your hustle to get this done and through and that it was duly noted several times, which we always don't see in an applicant's um, presentation. So I really appreciate the hustle on that. And what is also going to be a solution for um, your, your land is your landowner um, in the City of Arvada. So with that, um, I'll take a motion and then we can vote on this if there's no further discussion. Not seeing any.
I make a motion to approve uh, for the approval of intergovernmental agreement, RCU twenty twenty-four twelve with thirty-six findings of fact and two conditions.
And then we have Commissioner Odoricio, did you have a question?
I'll second that.
Okay. And the land use uh, item passes five to zero. So thank you to the City of Arvada and Mr. Fiori for being here today.
Chair, if I could ask a question or personal question? Um, congratulations everyone on the hard work. Um, maybe one personal privilege, it seems like the next land use might be lengthy. Um, could we have a bio break?
Yes, we can take a.
I, I, I did it over intake of coffee, that's on me.
Is it a continuance or?
Isn't it a continuance?
That would be up to the board.
Oh, you're proposing a continuance?
The applicant's requesting a continuance.
Oh, that's a different, that's of course of a different color. I, I think I can hang.
Totally different.
Yeah. I was like, oh, we're going to get into it, but maybe there's a continuance.
I, I would support.
Go ahead.
I, I, I would support hearing uh, the representative from the next, and if we decide to continue it, then we're done. If not, then we could take a bio break.
So much TMI today. Um, I'm going to bring it back to land use and everybody's needs. Uh, we can start with the second land use case. No, you're good.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Marion with Community and Economic Development Department. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to let the applicant uh, address the board.
Thank you so much. So name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, David Foster, uh, three sixty South Garfield here on behalf of the applicant. We have requested a continuance um, to be in uh, keeping with the planning commission's recommendation. Uh, we wanted to work a little bit more on some of the uh, uh, legal eviction proceedings uh, on the property. It's ready, it's prepared for rezoning. But uh, if we had uh, until March eighteenth, I think you would see a, a much different property uh, for your review. And we've, we've already received a wonderful recommendation of approval from your staff. And, and so we'd just like to kind of button things up with your permission.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you so much for being here today. Any questions from the boards? Commissioner Odoricio?
Um, they want to, the, the, the request would be to continue it to March?
A date certain of March eighteenth.
Actually, the um, the most of uh, the available date will be April fifteenth, Commissioner.
Alright.
Tech help on my left.
Or we could proceed today and get it done, right? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, uh, just the interact, you could proceed today. Um, you could also continue to March eighteenth, although we do have two cases scheduled for that day already. The next available date that don't have any cases scheduled is April fifteenth. So there's several options.
See the applicant coming down. Go ahead, Commissioner Odoricio.
Looks like the applicant has a preference of those three options.
Happy to proceed. Um, just don't think a continuance makes the most sense. Uh, the, the, the matter, I think, is it's not controversial. Um, I think it would be a rather um, quick hearing, hopefully. Maybe I'm gooching uh, myself in the project. But uh, I recognize that you want to just have two hearings, but I think it would be a rather quick land use hearing if, if March eighteenth. We're trying to get it done sooner rather than later. It's an additional month. Uh, but if it's April, it's April.
Okay, and then if it, if it looks like it's a contentious or longer hearing, we could always move it from March to the next one, which probably be June or July. Alright, I have no problem, uh, if, if the staff is okay, I'd be okay to make a motion for a continuance.
We strike that from the record.
Well, I'm just saying like, if we have to continue it in March, then it's like another three months.
Okay, I'm going to weigh in here. Um, I'd like to make a motion to uh, continue this item to a date specific of March eighteenth.
I'll second that. We might need to do a voice vote.
I'm sorry, clerk, my, my screen is frozen or chair, whoever, whoever needs to hear that.
Commissioner Baca? Yes. Commissioner Hanson? Yes. Commissioner Mulca? Yes. Commissioner Pinter? Yes. Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Board. That pa- motion passes five to zero and no other items on the agenda this morning. We are adjourned at ten forty-nine. We can all take a quick break and meet you upstairs in the study session rooms at eleven.
I've been ready since drink.